Yeah.
I have the agenda.
Yeah, I know.
Hey, Hyra.
You're joining us?
Yeah.
I have the agenda.
How is your doctor appointment?
No.
I told you, I've been trying to get it for forever.
Hmm.
I'm sorry.
Why you apologize?
No, I'm just looking for my phone.
I thought we did discuss. No, I thought we were talking about it.
Yeah.
Oh, 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 I thought you meant pull it all together.
No, no.
Oh, I'm fine. Sure, sure, I'm gonna ask the questions. Okay, yeah, 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 yeah. I, I mean, yeah, I mean, I think we just get one way or the other.
Ruining the descend agenda, I'll do.
Right, right.
It'll be an eight-minute meeting instead of seven minutes.
And it might be a little bit longer because of the...
Do we have a seat for him up here, too?
No.
No.
Oh, we don't, I mean, there's no... Could I, could I like to call the meeting to order, please? Notice of this meeting has been provided to the Montclair Times, to Herald News, and Star Ledger. Notice has also been posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building. Roll call, please.
Mayor Jackson.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Schager.
Here.
Councilor Baskerville.
Present.
Councilor Hurla.
Present.
Councilor McMahon.
Here.
Councilor Russo.
Present.
Councilor Spiller.
Present.
Thank you.
Pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the minutes of April 10, 2018. Are there any additions or corrections? Also move. All in favor?
Aye.
Well, we will come back to public comment. I'm gonna ask representatives from the libraries come up and tell us about the 125th anniversary and Cheaper by the Dozen.
Hello, again.
Good evening.
You're seeing a lot of the library this month, which is not a bad thing necessarily. But we are glad to be here today to talk about our Montclair Reads program. Since it is the library's 125th birthday, we wanted to do a community-wide program which celebrated Montclair and the library. And we decided to pick a book that's very Montclair, Cheaper by the Dozen. The Gilbert family lived here for many years, and so we have copies that we have given to all of you, and we are passing out to community members and book clubs in Montclair. We have copies at the library, and inside each copy we have a bookmark and then a discussion guide. So if you want to have a discussion on your street with your neighbor, with your spouse, with kids on the playground, you can have an impromptu book discussion. And there's also a number of events we have. I'd like to highlight that we'll have a lecture by Montclair historian Michael Farrelly. And then we're also having Peter Gilbert, grandson of Frank and Lillian, will be coming to town to talk about his family. And then we'll also be having a lecture by Jane Lancaster, who is a professor at Brown University, who wrote a biography on Lillian. And so we're really excited to celebrate this family, and especially to highlight the great achievements of a very renowned female scientist who invented lots of things. And so if you came to our birthday party on Saturday, you got one of these bags, and I want to thank you all for coming who did. But if not, you have a bag which also contains a copy of our annual report, which talks about some of the things we've done this last year at the library. So we just encourage everyone in town to get a copy at the library. This copy is free. We're giving them out while supplies last. And then participate in some of our events to celebrate Montclair.
Thank you very much, Peter. And the affair this weekend was tremendous. It really, really was. So well-attended, and there's so much enthusiasm about the plans to expand and really enhance our library. And I think, I think it was Will who made the statement that it's a, it's gonna be a library befitting Montclair.
Right.
And I think that that is about as cogent of a statement as I can make about it. It really, it's what we need at this point in our township. So congratulations to everybody about how it was done, and excited about the prospects. Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
One of my neighbors stopped me, Peter, as I was going back in. He says, "My favorite book, I gave it to him."
Yeah. Well, we have, we have copies on the back table that we've been told we can leave for people to come and take. So, but again, we have copies at the library. If you just want to let your friends and family and neighbors know, we're more than happy to give them out, so that everyone can have a copy.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have some proclamations, three in fact. One is a proclamation declaring April 2018 as Get Yourself Test It Month. Is anyone here for that proclamation? Then I will move it. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
There's another one declaring May 2018 as Preclampsia Awareness Month. Is there anyone here for that one? I'll also move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we have a third one, which is declaring Montclair Red Nose Day in 2018. I'm gonna ask, if she wouldn't mind, I'm gonna ask Ms. Speech to come up and read that one. She worked so hard on it and has been so involved in it. I think it'd be fitting if you read it.
Better net you have to use.
You gotta have on your red, you gotta have your red nose on it. You gotta have your red nose.
It's sounding a little lazy.
Proclamation declaring Montclair Red Nose Day in 2018. Whereas the health and happiness of every child everywhere is important as the adults everywhere. And whereas, in recognition of this fact, thank you. Red Nose Day encourages diverse people of every background to put on red noses and have a good laugh for a good cause, creating better circumstances for some of our most determined children. And whereas proceeds will benefit the Red Nose Day Fund, which goes to support nonprofit organizations that work to keep children healthy, safe, and educated in all 50 states, Puerto Rico, and 34 countries around the world. And whereas the Township of Montclair will bring the entire community together on May 9th in advance of Red Nose Day for a series of activities to raise money and awareness. And whereas the township will then don their red noses and watch the Red Nose Day USA live broadcast, which will take place in New York City and air on NBC, May 24, 2018 at 8:00 p.m. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council of the Township of Montclair and the County of Essex hereby proclaim May 24, 2018 to be Red Nose Day and encourage everyone to put their noses on. And I'll put it on now.
All right.
Okay. Our town would want on.
Thank you, and thank you. This is really a worldwide effort to raise awareness and to raise money for, to support kids all over the world who are needing a food and medical attention and other types of needs. And one of our local residents, Luke Parker Bowles, has been really an integral part of it and has been pushing to get this done. And Montclair is gonna be the, sort of the focal point of this effort here in the states. And we're very proud of that, and I think it's, again, very fitting of what we view ourselves as a community. I would say that Montclair is very proud to be known, the first town in America to paint the town red for Red Nose Day. Many local businesses and organizations are already involved, including the Montclair Public Schools, Montclair Film Festival, Montclair Orchestra, Montclair Bread Company, Fueled by Donuts, First Presidential Church of Upper Montclair, and Scoundrel Films. More are joining each day, and we cannot wait to see the cumulative impact of our entire community coming together to help end child poverty, one nose at a time. So, council, it's that time. It's all on these red noses, I can't, I don't know, how you doing, like this? Hey.
Are we supposed to wait till May 4th?
No, no, do it now. Take a little picture now.
Oh, okay, we're going for it.
This is what you will look like at some point in the future.
All in.
Everybody got their red noses on?
I'm with it.
All right.
I'm so with it.
Look, it feels like mine, getting your take off.
Oh, my God, that's rough. Do you want to get a picture of this?
My nose is big or not. It'll stay on.
Smells like ink or something.
Rich has it.
Smells like ink.
You got it?
You got it? Woo! Oh, Rich didn't wear it. Rich didn't wear it.
Now we have to walk around.
So I did, I had a conversation with Luke, and he mentioned how much our school system in particular is really, and I think they're gonna be engaging Montclair State as well, but our Montclair Public Schools are really gonna be all out for this effort. And Dr. Pinsack and the entire school system are gonna be very supportive, so we're looking forward to it. Thank you. Okay, public comment. Anyone wishing to address the council, feel free to do so. And we will start with the wonderful Joyce Goldman.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My next to the last meeting. I will tell you that at the next meeting in May, I will bring along Frank DelGoreo, who's gonna be your liaison. He's been in South Orange. He said they love him so much there, they invite him to block parties. I have not gotten such an invitation, but so be it. He lives in Montclair, and he is the director of our Department of Health, runs the hospital center up in Cedar Grove. So you'll be very pleased to have him here working with you. I just want to make a couple of comments to remind everybody and those who are listening in town that April 28th is, is Bring Your Drugs, to dump them off at the, at the police station. It's going on throughout the county in front of many police stations, almost all of them throughout the town. Everybody get rid of your drugs, whether they're prescription drugs or whether they're aspirin, outdated vitamins, whatever it is. Just come, dump it in there, take your plastic and recycle that. Also, on April 28th, which is the date for that, we're having Earth Day at the Environmental Center, which runs from 11 o'clock to 4 o'clock, is always a great day. You get an opportunity to speak with Native Americans and see the way they lived and participate in crafts and buy things that are environmentally positive. And then the third thing I did, I wanted to tell you is that May 5th is Household Hazardous Waste Day up at, at our Public Works Building up in Cedar Grove also. And go to our website, which is essexcountynj.org. You can find out all the specific information. And the last point is that the Glenfield Fieldhouse, the Wally Joyce Building, is undergoing renovation, as I'm sure Councilor Baskerville is aware, and is moving along quite well, and certainly will be finished by the time school ends, so that all the summer programs will be able to be continued there in fresh, bright, new space. So that's, that's it from Joe DiVincenzo and the Essex County Reporting Team. Anybody have any questions? Oh, the Freeholders passed the, the speed reduction on Grove Street. So that, yes, that will make everybody feel safer. And it should take about 20 days for them to get the signs made and to install the signs before the actual changeover occurs. But it's on its way, and plans are being made. Anything else?
So Joyce, how long have you been at the county?
Well, I've been here 15 years with Joe. I came in during the transition. And then prior to that, I was with Peter Shapiro when he came in, when it first started, when we wrote the administrative code and brought the Parks Department and welfare into the county as opposed to being independent agencies. So that was from, oh my God, I have to say the date, 79 to 80.
78, Joyce, number right after the 13th, November.
Yeah, 78, yeah, November 78. It was a beautiful summer, wonderful fall, gorgeous weather, and we were holding, swearing in on the outside steps where the Brennan statue now stands, on a day that was very similar to Sunday, this past Sunday. Cold, wakery, horrible. Brendan Byrne was there like this. So it was, it was memorable. And then I've worked, I worked for the state under Florio, and I worked again under DeLazio here. But this, this has been my most significant, I hate to say it, but Democrats hired me and Republicans fired me. That was, that is the political life, so.
Right, right. Well, we are extremely grateful to you for your many years of service at the Township of Montclair, not only in your roles as a county, but also as a resident. And we have a small token of our appreciation for you.
Oh.
Because you are a great person.
Yes.
And I have to say, Joyce, every time I've called you or emailed you, you always got right back to me. You've been great, just great to work with.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Oh, my gosh. It's official with the seal and everything.
Well deserved.
Okay, now somebody else take a picture of that. Thank you. Thank you very much. Oh, God. Yeah, why don't we do that?
Yes.
Yeah, we stay, stay up here, you get right in the middle, Joyce.
My county permitting.
That's right.
My mate, my friend, my long-term buddy.
That's right.
I think he made me run for crying. With Jerry Graham. And then I got laid off.
Oh. Best wishes to you, Joyce, and your retirement.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Guys, people are nervous, yeah.
Yeah, all right, go around.
Okay.
We'll go around.
I didn't get the check again. Oh. You might want to stay up. You stay up. You'll step down and you stay up. That's the long and the short of it, right?
You guys ready?
Yeah.
We're still in your council, Joyce, I think you need to...
I still have in here a hat.
Beautiful, beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comment? Scott? Is that yours, Linda?
No.
No. Yes, it was. My present.
Good evening. William Scott, co-chair of the Montclair Housing Commission and also the chair of the Montclair NAACP Housing Committee. I just wanted to comment on the new business ordinance for the Affordable Housing Ordinance and the Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance. And I'm not going to get into a lengthy comment. I know, I just wanted to point at the fact, point out the fact that, you know, the council has worked on this for close to three years. And I think it's coming to a positive conclusion. I really appreciate all the hard work that you guys have put into coming up with the new ordinances that are going to really benefit the residents of Montclair. Mayor, we've had a lot of conversation about affordable housing over the last three years, but I think your, your philosophy now, as I told, I think I mentioned several months ago, meetings ago, it's now going to become an ordinance. So I'm glad to see it moving in that direction. So I just wanted to make a comment and say thank you, and the Housing Commission looks forward to working with these new ordinances. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Scott. We appreciate your hard work. Anyone else, public comment? Okay, I will close the public comment here, and segue from Mr. Scott's comment. We have two new ordinances, amending Montclair Code 65 regarding affordable housing, and also Montclair Code 347, Respect the Zoning. Mr. Karasik, if you could just give us a two-minute overview on each?
Well, each of these, these two ordinances relate to affordable housing. The Chapter 347 is part of the zoning ordinance, which is our IZL, our Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance, which provides for set-asides of units. The Chapter 65, Affordable Housing, lays out various criteria and programs for creating affordable housing. So the two of them actually are one topic, just in two different places. And what these ordinances are doing right now is amending each of those to reflect that COA, the Council on Affordable Housing of the state, no longer exists and no longer functions. So it's grounding our ordinance, basically, it's getting us straight with the state law by grounding our ordinances on the regulations that do exist and not on regulations that have been removed. Other than that, it gives us a little more flexibility as well in terms of how we construct our affordable housing. Other than that, it's not, there's nothing else, really.
Well, we'll come, we'll have questions when we come to each one, if there are questions. But let's see. Then I will move Item A, Amending Code 65 Affordable Housing.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Councilor Baskerville.
Yes.
Councilor Hurla.
Yes.
Councilor McMahon.
Yes.
Councilor Russo.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Schager.
Yes.
Councilor Spiller.
Yes.
Mayor Jackson.
Yes. I will also move Item B, Ordinance Amending Montclair Code 347 Regarding Zoning. I have a discussion point, and actually interested also to see what Mr. Scott's viewpoint is. On 347-160, it permits the developer to meet his obligations by providing affordable housing off-site. Developer may join with others to provide the units in the same ward as a development or reasonably comparable location. And I remember, I believe when that was originally done, that was done so that all the affordable housing was not gonna be moved into, I believe it was into Fourth Ward, was the thought there. So I guess my question is if, do we want to say, do we want to consider, let's say when somebody had a project in the Fourth Ward or something like that and wanted to move affordable housing into the First Ward, this ordinance would prohibit that? What, what, Mrs. Scott, yeah, I'm interested, what you think, what you think about that?
What section is that?
Oh, it's 347-160. If my memory serves me correct, I think there was a resolution from a couple of administrations that they wanted to make sure that affordable housing was distributed equally throughout the township. And maybe, you may want to go back and take a look at that, because I think that was one of the reasons that was put in, well, it was a resolution, hopefully you had some teeth, but it was a resolution because obviously we knew that there was a concern of, you know, eighty-some-odd percent of the affordable housing currently is still in the Fourth Ward. And those numbers could have fluctuated a percentage or two, but the majority still was in the Fourth Ward. So that resolution, I believe, it's a few administrations, it's definitely before you guys, was put into place because there was a concern about the unbalanced amount of affordable housing in the Fourth Ward. So if there's an opportunity to move it to the First Ward, and if there's always costs associated, things of that nature, in finding a valid location, I think that flexibility should be put into the ordinance to move it. A question, Mr. Karasik, does the second or, after the or, it says or at a reasonably comparable location, in your mind, would that allow for that?
Yes, I was actually here when that resolution that Mr. Scott's referring to was adopted. And the reason that part was put in was it shouldn't be in the, the housing shouldn't be in the same ward, but if it's in another ward, it has to go by the Housing Commission. So it does give the flexibility to build it anywhere else. It just gives the Housing Commission a say in that, so that the issue that we're worried about doesn't go away.
Okay, okay. Is that, you comfortable with that, Mrs. Scott? Yes. And just one more point. As I mentioned, we've gone down this road quite some time with affordable housing concerns, and Councilwoman Baskerville, being the liaison for the Housing Commission, has worked very hard. And I absolutely don't want to forget to make sure that she's recognized for the hard work she's done with the Housing Commission over, over multiple administrations, okay? So just want to make sure that that point is there.
Thank you, Mr. Scott, I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? To that point, the, I get, I think I understood some of that conversation. However, you know, as I read that in lay terms where it says or, you know, at a reasonably comparable location, I think the point of, at least the thought behind the conversation there is maybe you wouldn't want it in a reasonably comparable location, meaning we want to have the flexibility to put it in any location. By reading that, I mean reasonably comparable would seem to limit where it could go, as opposed to if we're saying we want to be able to move affordable housing or have the ability to move affordable housing everywhere.
We just said at another location, at another.
Yeah.
And let, and let the Housing Commission, okay. Does anybody object to that?
I, I have some concerns, and I'm not making an objection at this time, Mr. Mayor. I'm a little bit concerned about how some of the developers may, may interpret this, and even if it goes to another board for review, because I, I like the idea of the developers having to put the required affordable units in the locations, if it's in wards other than four. Because what, what tends to happen is the developers look for locations, maybe to avoid having people of lower socioeconomics in very luxurious developments, where people are coming in with high-end rents and that type of thing. And we've had some of the developers come before us in the Economic Development Committee, and I think the clear message, as the three of us were receiving it, was that they were not anxious to provide the affordable... Commission a say in that, so that the issue that we're worried about doesn't go away.
Okay, okay, is that, you comfortable with that, Mrs. Scott?
And just one more point, as I mentioned, we've gone down this road quite some time with affordable housing concerns, and Councilwoman Vazquezville being the liaison for the Housing Commission has worked very hard. And I absolutely don't want to forget to make sure that she's recognized for the hard work she's done with the Housing Commission over, over multiple administrations, okay? So just want to make sure that that point is there.
Thank you, Mr. Scott, I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
To that point, the, I get, I think I understood some of that conversation, however, you know, as I read that in lay terms where it says or, you know, at a reasonably comparable location, I think the point of, at least the thought behind the conversation there is maybe you wouldn't want it in a reasonably comparable location, meaning we want to have the flexibility to put it in any location. By reading that, I mean reasonably comparable would seem to limit where it could go, as opposed to if we're saying we want to be able to move affordable housing or have the ability to move affordable housing everywhere.
We just said at another location, at another.
Yeah.
And let the Housing Commission, okay, does anybody object to that?
I have some concerns, and I'm not making an objection at this time, Mr. Mayor. I'm a little bit concerned about how some of the developers may interpret this, and even if it goes to another board for review, because I like the idea of the developers having to put the required affordable units in the locations, if it's in wards other than four, because what tends to happen is the developers look for locations, maybe to avoid having people of lower socioeconomics in very luxurious developments, where people are coming in with high-end rents and that type of thing. And we've had some of the developers come before us in the Economic Development Committee, and I think the clear message, as the three of us were receiving it, was that they were not anxious to provide the affordable units. And I just think, even when we've tried to allow people options, I don't think those options are comparable to some of the developments that are going up, that are having, you know, luxurious buildings with all the amenities. And so I think wherever the affordable units would make sense, I don't know why we should continue to let them to choose to take them out, because what may happen, unless we're very diligent in this, we may end up continuing to perpetuate segregated situations where you don't have people with lower socioeconomics in the buildings with the more affluent people that are paying high-end, and I would hate for that to happen.
Well, I think two things, one is, I don't, what this is saying, basically, that it presumes that they've been given permission to move it, so that, that presumes, so it's quite possible that the, that they would not be allowed to do it. This is, this presumes that that, we, everybody agrees...
And we would have to tell them that?
Oh, yeah, 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 that's, we have to get permission from us, or in some cases the Housing Commission to do that, that's number one. And two, I don't believe, and my, my memory may be shot, but I don't believe we've ever allowed anybody to move units outside of their buildings, other than Richard Polton extending the affordability controls down at the Montclarian. Other than that, I don't think this has ever happened.
No, but we've had, no, and I think we've done an outstanding job, thanks to your leadership, with making sure that has not happened to date. So I'm trying to fast-forward, and if this body is not sitting here, and perhaps a planning board that is not as excited about having integrated socioeconomics in all of the developments as the present sitting boards are, it just, to me, it leaves a lot at the will of those bodies. An example might be, some people might think that it's a great idea to put all of the affordable units in one building, regardless of where that's located in Montclair. And if the sitting boards then think that's great, they might vote for that. I have a problem with that, because that's perpetuating segregation in a way that I'm not comfortable with. I think that we've done a great job in Montclair over the years of not having all buildings for affordability, by and large, and making sure that we do have a formula that is going to pretty much lock in integrating people from all backgrounds. And I just, I just, I'm just thinking out loud, trying to make sure that when the bodies change, the laws will still be able to accomplish that.
I think, I hear your point, but the harsh reality is, if the body wanted to change the law, they would just change the law. If they were really to not want people to live in a certain way, they would just vote that you could just, you didn't have to do that, you didn't have to do what our thinking was. So I think, I agree with you a thousand percent that it should be built, you know, wherever it is, to me included, but I'm comfortable in the sense that, one, they just can't, it's not unilateral decision by the developer, it's got to be agreed to by the township along with the, with the Housing Commission. And two, assuming that concept was even remotely acceptable, it would have to be, in my mind, something where it just made so much sense, and I can't think of that off the top of my head, but, so I don't think, I think we're very protected here in this language, I believe.
All right. That sounds good.
Yeah, I share your concern, actually, Dr. Vazquez, what's the mechanism in place now to protect against exactly what Dr. Vazquez was just...
It would have to be approved, like, say I came in, I said I wanted to move, it would have to be approved by, assuming it's in front of the planning board, by the planning board, and also by the redevelopment agency, which would be us.
Okay, and that's across the board, then, for any project?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But that's if it's in a redevelopment.
If it's in a redevelopment.
See, if it's not there, then it's the planning board, and to your point, we're not the planning board, and the planning board's subject to change, what are the protect, I actually agree, I think it should be, if you're putting a building in, you should have the units where you're building, and not put some, you know, somewhere else that aren't attached to that particular project. And I share your concern as to what we do to protect the diversity of the building, socioeconomic status, and that we don't have a situation where there's some luxury high-rise, and then we move things over, and then we have no control, whether we're sitting here or not, I believe that that final determination should, I agree with you, should be at the council level, is what, I think what you've...
Thank you, well said.
But I don't, but I think, but I don't think as a matter of law, that's right, because it's, it's an application, in this case, would be in front of the planning board. For us, it would be the redevelopment agency, but if it's not in front of us, it's the planning board. So the planning board's going to decide, okay, yeah, this may make sense to do this, but then they have to talk with the Housing Commission, Housing Commission has to buy in, and so there's a lot of, in my opinion, a lot of safeguards here. And again, I think the bottom line is, if there's a governing body here who wants, who likes the 180 of what you and Dr. Vazquez talked about, they would just change the law. It'd be very easy, if that's, if that's what they wanted to do.
Right. Now, is the Housing Commission, Mr. Attorney, is that a statutory body created by the state, or is that one of ours?
It's not a statutory body, it's a creation of this council, and it functions as a commission. And I just want to say one thing about this, I think the mayor and Councilor Vazquez said it before, it's worked, this section, the way it is. There's just been a lot of development, and there hasn't been any development in which there've been off-site places, so in a sense, this particular section has worked.
Okay.
And, Mr. Mayor, and so, yes, I'm getting clarity about how this will work, I'd just like to comment on something that I heard you say that I think is very important, and yet so often overlooked. You said, then the planning board will speak with the Housing Commission, and in theory, I think that that's an outstanding idea, and that that should be happening, and I would like to, for us to encourage that, because far too often, more times than not, there's not that communication, and the Housing Commission is not a part of the dialogue. But I appreciate you expressing the way we, as a body, would like for things to take place. Thank you.
So I just wanted, to Councilor Spiller's point, do we want to just say at another location?
If I may, you know, having read this and heard what you said about that, I think a reasonably comparable location ensures that they're giving, you know, at least as good as the full-price units.
Okay.
As opposed to another unit, they could say, you know, if you make it more broad, then you could get a lesser someplace else. So I think, I think the way it's worded is better.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd have to, I'd have to agree with Councilor McMahon, and I think it goes to addressing what we had raised as well.
Good, follow me.
I'm okay with leaving that there as well, I think that my concern with it is it limits in terms of, one of the conversations we've had here is the lack of diversity in terms of affordable housing.
Yes.
And if it's another comparable location, my only concern was it limiting the ability to move it to other locations, where we're trying to increase that diversity.
But the Housing Commission gets to pick second, whether that's reasonably comparable or not, so.
Well, I was comfortable with, they're going to decide, and we're going to decide no matter what, and as the mayor noted, whoever's sitting here's going to decide, so the wording on this is a little moot, so I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I was, I was going to say, Mayor, that, I want to leave it the way it is, provided we have that input from the Housing Commission, you know, we have a new commissioner here, student from Montclair State, Keanu, from one of my classes, and it's got to be a meaningful commission, it has a role, you know, it has an ability to make these adjustments and make things fairer. And I still want us to look at the future and say, you know, we've got this huge amount of development, affordable housing in the South End, the town, Fourth Ward, South End, we finally got some development in the Second Ward, we really have never had anything in the First Ward. So to be one town, to be one Montclair, to be whole again, we've really got to start moving things north, and moving things around, and not having this imbalance that I've seen over these eighteen years I've served. So I just hope that the Housing Commission can have enough input, substantial input, that they can help steer us in that direction.
Mr. Mayor, is there a way that we can write in some language here that would require some input for the Housing Commission?
It says here, it says...
Oh, okay, I didn't see it says they would have to give the...
To be determined by, the Housing Commission determines that, whether or not it's comparable.
That's correct input.
Okay, no, you're correct.
And what we've done from a Housing Commission standpoint, we really pushed to make sure that there was early engagement of the Housing Commission, also the Historical Preservation Committee, Commission, as well as the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee, that's a part of the master plan. We wanted to make sure that it was understood right in the master plan, that those bodies are involved in affordable housing across the board. So, you know, process-wise, you know, I spend a lot of time going to planning board meetings and things of that nature, we have some members that do show up, but, you know, we are committed to make sure that we're staying very close to the process, and we've done that over the last eight-plus years, as you know. I don't think too many meetings, as it relates to affordable housing from a planning board standpoint, has not been covered by a member of the planning board.
A hundred percent. Thank you, Mrs. Scott. Okay, so I think we're going to leave it, and I'll move it.
Second.
Roll call?
Yes.
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 Yes. We have some resolutions, we're going to actually entertain these individually, there's a resolution awarding a contract for 2018 spring tree planting, ISO move.
Second.
Discussion?
Mayor? Mr. Stafford, I know we've discussed this a few times, can you just generally give me what you think would be the timeframe around some of the data on how many of these trees, or how much of this budget we're spending to plant versus remove, versus didn't get planted because of the weather, or so on and so forth?
I will ask the leadership of the DCS to give me that, forward to you, I would just beg your indulgence, because I'll tell you, they are neck-beat in tree removal, still, after which beautification of our parks and other public areas will start and continue on a seven-day basis.
Yeah, I think, for me, and also for my colleagues, the, totally understood and no urgency around this, except for, before we were to see another request for or bid, accepting whatever that would be, I'd like to kind of have that information, so that it could determine, do, are more dollars needed to get more trees in the ground, are we on pace? So that's the timeframe I'm looking for, but just along those lines. Okay, thank you.
Roll call?
Yes.
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 Yes. Item two is a resolution authorizing mandatory direct deposit for NJSA 52:42-15, an ISO move.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, I would like to, as I said last week, that I am, I'm against this, I don't think that it's fair, I think that it, it puts a hardship on certain employees, we are, we're a small business, I look at us as a small business, we're not AT&amp;T, the Board of Ed did not, did not go this route with their employees, and I think, I don't think that it's the right thing for us to do, I really don't. So I can't support this.
In case, Mayor, the people don't understand, this is, again, to avoid fraud that has occurred, manager, I think that's what the explanation was, to avoid fraud.
That's one reason.
Technology is used, you know, it's abused sometimes, and to do this was something that would help prevent, or help us as a business, as councillor, as Deputy Mayor Schleger said, to prevent abuse or fraud, or what else was it for? Is it just to bring us up to date technologically, once everybody uses direct deposit, that's what people do? But there are a few people out there, maybe older consumers, who just don't do it, and don't want to do it, and they'll need to have a checking account, I believe, with the inconvenience and the expense of that, in order to comply with it, no?
Well, but, there are, there are three essential reasons. One was the fraud avoidance that you talked about, another is a cost avoidance, and a third is a streamlining, both external and internal, but a checking account is really not made mandatory by this, because someone who gets a paper check could get a debit card and present that to the bank, just like one would present a check.
And what if a person goes to a check-cashing store and gets their check cashed, could they use their debit card there?
I don't know, I'd have to know the particulars about the check-cashing, but what I would say is...
Well, of course, from Bill Hurlock's office, there's a check-cashing business on Willow.
So I'd have to ask them what their policy is.
But if you, if you have a debit card, it would be economically what makes sense to do it, because you would pay nothing to go to an ATM or to the bank to do it, and it would take 10% or whatever it is from the, for the check-casher. So it would make, it wouldn't, economically what makes sense.
And then you set up a PIN, how does that work?
Yeah, it's like a debit card, you have a PIN, and you can go, and you can go to the bank and pull out cash, just like you would your check, your regular chip.
But these same people we're talking about, they may not be too, they may not use that method, they just get a check and they cash it off. I'm an old-hands guy like that, I think...
I just don't think it's right, I just don't think it's right. The state of New Jersey has not adopted this. The state of New Jersey says they strongly suggest it, but they don't make it mandatory. And I don't see, I just don't see how we could do that to certain people, it's just not fair. That's all.
I can understand Robyn's concerns, and it's always difficult for me to just dictate to someone how they're going to get the money that they worked for, and that they have to do things. I think that it was encouraging for me when we heard that there were just a few people that had not signed on board voluntarily. I think education will probably be key to try to encourage those remaining few to sign up, but I understand even more have signed up since our last meeting, so we might be down to just a couple of people, or three, I'm not sure of that, that exact number, but I think that that's encouraging, and as far as fraud avoidance, we know that there's no such thing, really. I mean, you hear, I've heard about fraud, when people get direct deposits, sometimes things come directly out, so there's a lot of different scenarios, so I want to take the fraud avoidance off, and I'd hate to think that we're making our laws here in the Township of Montclair based on such things as fraud avoidance. And so I'd like to give the individuals, you know, a little bit more education, and perhaps a time to think it over, and I would, I would feel best not mandating how they receive the money that they've worked for.
If I may, the fourth whereas says, the Chief Financial Officer of the Township of Montclair may provide for any special exceptions that may be permitted by law.
Right.
So if someone has an actual problem with it, they can...
That's the debit card.
The law is, no, the law is that the special exceptions can only be seasonal or temporary employees.
Correct.
Seasonal or temporary.
But there is an option of, in lieu of direct deposit, anyone can get a debit card.
Correct.
I have some doubts about this, that's why I have reservations about it, because my consumer viewpoint, but, I mean, this is something that's been recommended to us by our financial staff, right?
We have, yeah, and again, I fully appreciate what Deputy Mayor Schleger's saying, but if you look at most of the governmental bodies around us, all of them, all of them have adopted, you know, Hudson County, Essex County, all the, most of the governing bodies around us have done this. One, because it save, it does save money, two, we talked about the fraud issue, and it does provide for, frees up a lot of time for our employees to spend, particularly because we have a contingent that gets weekly payrolls, it makes their job, frees up time for them to spend on other things than just constantly preparing payroll. So to me, I think that's, that's an advantage, and I believe right now we're down to three, three full-time employees who, who don't have direct deposit, and so it's not like we're, even, you know, the impact is not, you know, to me, and seasonals are exempted anyway, so, but seasonals can get direct deposit if they want, but they don't have to, that's under the law, and it's not, it's not a, the way the law is written, it's not a, you're either all-in or you're not. You can't say, oh, you know, we're going to have 90% of our employees, get checks, I mean, get direct deposit and 10% or not, it's either, you get, everybody does it, either get a check or a card, or if you're seasonal, you can get a check. But I think that it's in the best, my opinion, is in, it's in the best interest of the taxpayer to have as much of efficient operation as we possibly can, and again, we have, what, 500 employees or so, 500, 598, and we have, we're down to three who do, who get it, and I think that it's, just makes sense to do it, that's my opinion.
And can you just help me to understand, so the seasonals can get a check, so those three employees that still seem that they're not interested, what would be the difficulty with those three people getting a check?
It's against the law, it's not what the law allows.
Oh, they can't do that under the law?
Correct.
But if we didn't vote to mandate it, then we could proceed, and everyone could get direct deposit except those three, if we don't, if we don't...
But I think that it's in the best, my opinion, is in, it's in the best interest of the taxpayer to have as much of efficient operation as we possibly can. And again, we have, what, 500 employees or so?
98.
598. And we have, we're down to three who do, who get it, and I think that it just makes sense to do it. That's my opinion.
And can you just help me to understand, so the seasonals can get a check, so those three employees that still seem that they're not interested, what would be the difficulty with those three people getting a check?
It's against the law. It's not what the law allows.
Oh, they can't do that under the law?
Correct.
But if we didn't vote to mandate it, then we could proceed and everyone could get direct deposit except those three? If we don't, if we don't vote for this tonight, and we leave things as they are now, then everyone can go to direct deposit, and those three would be able to get their...
But also, too, any employee who now gets direct deposit could go back to getting checks, and all new employees could come in and say, "I want to get a check."
Okay.
So you have to, it's, you have to decide what you want to do. And going forward, I mean, it's just, again, I understand the issues, but I just don't, I don't, you know, around us, everybody's going to this, and it just makes sense to me.
I understand what you're saying, Mayor. Councillor, Deputy Mayor Schlegel, you said the state does not do this?
That's right. The state, the state of New Jersey. My employer, my, my full-time employer, they cannot demand it. It's, it's, they strongly suggest it.
Private companies can't do it.
Right. They strongly suggest it, but they cannot demand it. And I believe it was our last governor who put this into place, and for government employees. The Board of Ed did not approve it, our Montclair Board of Ed.
I have some reservations about it.
Yeah.
What were the reasons, if you know, for the, you seem to be up on this.
For the Board of Education.
What was there?
I really don't want to, it's hard for me to quote them verbatim, but I, the gist...
And I'm not asking, I'm just asking what the rationale is.
But I did speak with them, and they, they just, they felt it was unfair to their employees. And that was their, that's what they told me.
Joyce, you had started to say something out there in the gallery.
I have two points.
Joyce, could you come up to the mic, please?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
I was gonna say that Essex County recently switched over to direct deposit for everybody. And the reason that I favor it is because people who go to check cashing places, it's like throwing money down the toilet. To cash, to have, pay somebody to give you money for your check is just ridiculous. It's so much better. Why should, we used to have somebody who worked for us in the county who would do that, and no matter what we said to her, she wouldn't switch until she was forced to switch over. And so every week, it would be $25. I mean, every other paycheck would be $25 to some guy who was behind a cage cashing, cashing checks, whereas otherwise, you just take the debit card, you put it in. It's like, everybody here must have an ATM card. You put it in, you push your four buttons, you get your money, and that's it. They don't need a check, they don't need anything. They just need a card. I don't, and particularly if, from my own personal opinion, I mean, three people, you're gonna hold up and continue doing the extra work and extra cost of check payroll, which is so outdated today, for three people? And 595 of them are getting direct deposit, and three people are costing you all this money? I understand the good feeling that you have, but it's three people. They can learn how to use an ATM card.
How many people does Essex County employ?
We have 3, 3,500.
3,500?
Yeah. I mean, people get used to it. It's just that they don't, you know, they don't envision it, just like the gal who used to work for us. I would say to her, "Every paycheck, why are you giving the man money to give you the money?" And she just couldn't get over it until she had to get over it, and then it was like, "Oh, yeah, I didn't realize that." So that's, that's just giving you the view from Essex County, you know, as to what we've experienced with it. And we haven't gotten complaints. Nobody's called me from, and they would call, the employees would call and complain. I haven't heard anything negative from anybody because it's, it's a way of life now, you know? So I...
I just also, I'm not sure, because I'm reading that under PL 213, Public Law 213, Chapter 28, "Direct deposit will be required for all state employee compensation on or after July 1, 2014." So I think, I think that New Jersey does require all employees to get direct deposit.
Wow, 2014?
Not that's not what our attorney told me.
2014, huh?
You know, I didn't look at what the state could do, I just looked at what Montclair could do, but I think that is what the law says. They gave it a, they passed the law a year or so before and then gave a date in which it changed over.
And in Montclair, you only have three people who have to change a habit. You know, it's not like you're changing 500 people, you, three people. You can't hold the progress for three people. I hope that doesn't sound mean, but it's realistic in this day and age, and it does save money and time because the preparation of the payroll is always, it's like everything else stops, and then they have to prepare the payroll, so that's, that's the Essex County view, so.
I think the council person was talking about, the state doesn't require private employers to do this, but they encourage private employers to do it.
Correct.
And that's true, but with their own employees, they do require...
Just so I'm clear, because I have a bunch of questions. Hang on, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Not what I, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, you're saying, under what you just read us, that it's required by the state as of 2014?
All state employees have to have direct deposit as of July 1, 2014.
Okay. And because the concern that I've always had is, having worked across the street from a place that has, you know, a facility like that, is, my understanding is there's individuals who can't get accounts because of their credit history or whatever their personal reason is, and that would always be a concern. Now, the ATM card, though, is there a fee to use that, do we know? Because if I, if I take my ATM...
No.
Before everybody starts shaking their heads and answering, let me finish a question. When I use my ATM card, so I'm a, you know, XYZ bank, but if I go to ABC Bank, then I get charged because it's not an XYZ card. How, does anyone know how these cards, just out of curiosity? How they work?
Well, it depends on the arrangement you negotiate with your bank, but again, I'm just, I don't know specifically, but I understand that the arrangement that we would have with our bank would be, you can use your bank card as you...
Because conceivably, these individuals wouldn't have a bank account because they don't have the credit, but they could get the card as a payment and then use it anywhere.
Right, because, and I understand, too, if we're talking about the cashing of check, right? You go to the bank and you cash the check, and you get the cash. You're not saying, "Here's my check, give me $2 back, give me, you keep three," because now I have an account, so...
Right.
It doesn't make any sense, right? So I'm going to the bank and I'm cashing the full amount. So you can take your card, go to the same bank, say, "Here's my card, give me the full amount of my, not check, but now my card." So let's say my check was $300. So now I cash my check, I get $300. I give them my card, I get $300.
Yeah, and I guess my question's just a little bit different in that I can go to, as you said, the bank, right? I can go to my bank, but I'm not gonna have a bank because I don't have enough credit, which is why I go to the check cashing place.
No, you would go to the bank that the, that the card is just...
It's the issue, though. Okay, I got it now. Thank you. That's, thank you for clarifying.
So you have to go to the investment savings bank?
Or whatever, I don't know what card.
It could be multiple. It doesn't...
If I, if, and maybe, Mr. Stafford, if you could jump in, but Councillor Hurlock, to your point, I believe that our CFO at the last meeting, she referenced, I think, four or five banks that they've negotiated zero fee at.
Two.
Was it two? Do you remember the number?
Slicking Savings Bank and Investors.
It is, it is.
Okay, so there's two, there's no fees if you went to those two?
Correct.
And if you went to the others, it would be the ATM transaction fee, I would imagine.
It could be subject to whatever the bank's policies.
But, but again, it doesn't, that, that, to me, that issue doesn't make sense in the context of what we're hearing about the objection, which is, I go to somewhere and I cash the check. If I cash the check, I get the cash. So I can go to, with the same card, I can go to the same bank and cash the card. So if my check is $300, I give you a check. Did you cash my check for me? Yes. Here's your $300. Or unless you go to one of these other places, and here's $250 or $275, whatever it might be. Now, if I have my card, I do the same thing. Here's my card, my PIN is whatever, can I have my $300?
I don't disagree. I just got the number as the Councillor...
And I'm honestly trying to find out, huh?
Yeah, yeah.
And those two banks, which are on Bloomfeld Avenue.
If I may, I can give you some actual numbers.
There's one location of each of those banks.
Well, my concern, though, would be with what Joyce had noted, that if, that's the case, right? You're dead right, but to the mayor's point, if you walk into, you know, our bank that the check was from and you cash it, you get your money. But if you go to a lot of these predatory check cashing places, they're gonna charge you 25 bucks or whatever it may be, way more than any ATM fee ever would be. And, or you go to the one bank that we bank with. This case now, you're gonna go to two banks that we bank with to get no ATM fee or to just present the card, as I was saying. Or you go to any bank you want, and maybe you pay, well, you know, I mean, they all vary, you know, $1.50, $2 of an ATM fee to get the money. You know, it's, it, a little bit addresses that concern of the predatory, you know, bank cash, you know, check cashing business that's there. And I guess it's weighing that out, including the fraud and some other pieces against, you know, the convenience and the usual, you know, people are used to what you're talking about, so I think that's what we're, we're weighing.
So in some ways, it's better because you're not having the higher charge that you would have at the, presumably at the check cashing institution as opposed to going, so I see...
But the bottom line here is that you are telling people how they can get paid, like, like I said, for the amount of work that they've done, and that's what's not right. You could have every scenario you would like. You could go here, you could go there, you could pay a fee, not a fee, but we're telling people how they have to be paid, and that's just not right. That's all.
Any other comment?
Go ahead.
I just had an actual number of the aforementioned check cashing place is $2.21 for every $100.
So it's on a percentage?
Yes, 2.21%.
That's not $25.
That's at that one particular cash, Jeff.
Put that much in cashing.
But it's not necessarily $25. Could be more. Could be more.
I'd like to find out more information, but if it's the governing...
Any other questions? Roll call?
Councillor Baskerville?
Yes.
Councillor Hurlock?
Yes.
Councillor McMahon?
Yes.
Councillor Russo?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Schlegel?
Yes.
Councillor Spiller?
Yes.
Mayor Jackson?
Yes. Mayor Jackson, if I may, I have a couple of announcements tonight. Yes. Oh, are you going? Oh, all right. I thought you were...
We're gonna get to it.
Okay.
No, I have, yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Two items. The first is the Assembly Bill 2014 was introduced today to the, to the Assembly. I haven't been able to get the results of that, but what this bill will do is to allow people to register to vote, not only when you register your cars, but if you get a driver's license, that is a learner's permit, if you have the right qualifications. In any agency that receives information that would allow you to vote under the regular circumstances, you now would be registered in New Jersey, so it's really opening it up. I know there's been a debate on that issue for some time. In Montclair, we personally had some problems with motor voter at the last election, people believing that they registered to vote when they registered their car, and for some reason, their registrations were lost. But I'll be very anxious tomorrow morning to see how that goes. The second, I learned this afternoon that Dr. Susan Cole today received the honor of Honorable Senator of the University of Grots. She's actually in Grots to receive that award today, and that is basically for Montclair State's efforts on behalf of the scholarship program, but mainly, which, as you know, that whole program came out of Montclair's Overseas Neighbors Initiative years ago. So I was going to reach out to Mrs. Belzak and report that that had happened and offer our congratulations to Dr. Cole.
Actually, I have some...
Great.
Anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Stafford?
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question there?
Oh, yeah.
Madam Clerk, do you know, is it where, when you register, you're gonna automatically be registered to vote, or you have the opportunity to register?
No, you would have to choose that.
You have to choose.
It's just the ability to do it at the same time.
Thank you.
I thought it was automatic. That's the difference. You always have the ability to register, but I thought it was automatically registered when you get a license. Check it out. Check it out.
I have the whole bill in my office. I'm happy to circulate it.
Mr. Carrister?
I was just gonna say that the bill the clerk is referring to was passed by both houses and approved by the governor today. So it is law.
It was. You, great.
But we're still not sure what it was.
So what the law says.
I can bring it up, but I haven't read it.
You interpret it for us.
I do have copies scattered in my office, and I'll send it around.
Mr. Stafford?
Thank you, Mayor. The Township's annual Shred Fest is scheduled for April 28th from 9:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. at our Department of Community Services yard. Second nominations are being accepted by the Historic Preservation Commission for Historic Preservation Awards, and from our Recreation Department, summer camp registration is now open, and pool badges are on sale. For more information on these programs and many other, others, please see our website.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, you're very anxious to do something.
Before we go in further, yeah, I'd like, I'd like to, I don't want to hold up the Edgemont project anymore. I'd like to resolve the parking issue. And we did get from Kim Craft in late March, two proposals. We all got them. If you don't have one, I have them here, if you need a copy. One was, they're both for the same six diagonal slots, which I think is a good idea. One is for $20,000 if it includes a hedge, and for $36,000 if it includes a wall. Personally, I'm in favor of the $20,000 option. I'd just like to see this thing move forward.
Which is a hedge?
With a hedge, yeah.
Well, I mean...
What does it do?
I mean, one, it would be nice, you know, just to know that you were gonna do that. I mean, it's just to sort of bring, it would be nice to give us, you know, a little bit of, we talked about this, let me finish. We talked about this last week at our last meeting, and we agreed that we were gonna take a look at some things and move ahead, but now, you know, to come now to do this is not what we typically do, but fine, we can, we can talk about it. I'm gonna give you just straight up my opinion. My opinion is that we agreed to revamp the park to go back to what the original Olmsted design was. An original Olmsted design was to have the circular path in front of the house. The, there were 12 parking spaces in the original design, except for people parking all over the park and destroying the park. There are now 13 spaces plus a space for the bus, and I believe an additional couple of spaces for handicap parking. And there's been no discussion about other ways, what the, what the, we're also talking at the same time about moving, creating a senior center, and the Pell has been reaching out about having a senior center at the United Way building. So we're moving on, it's meaning two parallel paths, and if the issue is people want to have a more immediate access to the building, there's a lot, there's ways of achieving that, because the issue isn't having more parking spaces. The issue is people want to get to the, get closer to the building and have more immediate access to the building. Well, one of the ways, for example, you can achieve that is you can have the circular driveway, but you can provide valet parking when people, when the seniors have events. So people can come in, it's actually closer, and it's even more convenient than having, having to park. Five spaces or 18 spaces make absolutely no difference at Edgemont Park. It's incredibly underparked, but that's the idea of it, because it's a park, and people park on the streets, and they walk from the neighborhoods to it or whatever. But you can, if the, if the objective is to have more convenient access, then we can provide valet service for people who come to the building, and until, unless until The, there were 12 parking spaces in the original design, except for people parking all over the park and destroying the park. There are now 13 spaces plus a space for the bus, and I believe an additional couple of spaces for handicap parking. And there's been no discussion about other ways, what, what the, what the, and we're also talking at the same time about moving, creating a senior center, and, and the Pell has been reaching out about having a senior center at the United Way building. So we're moving on, it's meaning two parallel paths. And if the issue is people want to have a more immediate access to the building, there's a lot, there's ways of achieving that, because the issue isn't having more parking spaces. The issue is people want to get to the, get closer to the building and have more immediate access to the building. Well, one of the ways, for example, you can achieve that is you can have the circular driveway, but you can provide valet parking when people, when the seniors have events. So people can come in, it's actually closer and it's even more convenient than having, having to park. Five spaces or 18 spaces make absolutely no difference at Edgemont Park. It's incredibly underparked. But that's the idea of it, because it's a park, and people park on the streets and they walk from the neighborhoods to it or whatever. But you can, if the, if the objective is to have more convenient access, then we can provide valet service for people who come to the building and until, unless until we have perhaps another alternative location for a senior center. The Edgemont Park is a park. It's not a senior center, as Mr. Russo, Council Russo indicated last week. And I think to make it parking for something that it is not, one, you're robbing green space, and two, it gets away from the original design and the original function of the park, which we are spending sums with new benches, new lighting, new path, new landscaping, to restore it to its original design. And to me, this is a bastardization of the original design.
And, and we've spoken with many people who apparently were not talked about before the design was passed. I never saw a design until I, I saw the construction, and I saw that what had been a U-shaped thing was turned into this snake thing that they expect people to parallel park on. And a number of people have come to me, residents of the area, seniors, partners for health, all complaining about the lack of parking there. We're only talking about adding six spaces, it's the de minimis intrusion into the, and works with the existing design. It makes sense for, I know it may not be a senior citizen center forever, but it is for the time being, and for the time being, they have to park there. And when, you know, when they're gone and it's, it's used for something else. The fact is that there is a house there. And that's what makes it different from every other park. It has a house, and it does have parking. And, and the parking that was designed, I don't think is particularly convenient to anybody, particularly seniors. I think the addition of the six slightly diagonal spaces doesn't take away from everything, doesn't take away from, you know, more than a couple of feet of green space, doesn't cost much money in the overall scheme of things, and it just makes sense. So I hope somebody will join me on that. As one who's very concerned about seniors, being one myself at 70, and raised these issues, and talked to many seniors who are very upset with what I said last week, I just have a problem with us making that the location that should be for seniors. So I'd like to see us move ahead and having a new location, so this is not the issue it has become. Now, communications, there may have been, you know, lack of people having input, they perceive at least, and there's a problem. And I want seniors to be able to get access there, certainly want them to be able to park, parallel parking on that S, you're right, Rich, is a big problem, I don't know how that happened, but as the mayor said, that's meant to be the park. And we're using it now, it is a house, but it's really a meeting room. I want to see, if we start to fool around with making more spaces just to keep this as a senior center, and we're never going to move ahead with a permanent senior center at a better location, which is more centralized, that to me is far up north on Valley Road, it's not centralized enough, in my opinion. And I think we're starting to negotiate, I hope, Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, with the United Way folks to try to do something there. Now, I want to defer that decision, you know, to the SCAC input from the SCAC Senior Citizen Advisory Committee, but I just have a problem with this being the focus of making it more convenient for seniors, because it's not meant to be a senior center.
I, I would like for us not to turn this into a discussion about that being a senior center or not. I think that, on the way I received it as one of the liaisons to the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee, and it wasn't specific to seniors, I think the discussions that I was privileged to was more about convenience of parking for all people. And they did particularly note people with varied abilities, and that doesn't necessarily have to be senior or not. I, this information, as we talk about this today, that I wasn't aware of, I'm not sure, was it this council that said we wanted to keep the Olmsted design? Because you said we agreed on that. And so I don't even know how we even got to that. I did have an opportunity to review the designs, but I don't feel that comfortable on, on having to vote on it this evening. I like the idea of getting more information in terms of timeline about other locations, but I don't, I don't think whether it's a senior house or whether it's not a senior house. I think for me, the question is accessibility and ease of parking for, for all people. And I did look at the curve that's, that's there now. I did look at some designs that looked like they might be more user-friendly for, for anyone, but I certainly agree, I've always been one to want to preserve as much open green space as possible. So my preference would be not to have to vote on this at this particular moment.
All right. I don't see any, I don't hear any overwhelming to vote or anything, so.
No, okay.
Counsel members, any comment?
Mayor, if I could before, it's too late, because my mom is waiting out there to hear a shout out. My mother's 99, as you know, this week. We didn't wait till 100 to have a party. And my sister's out here from California, and she's sitting there with my mother waiting to hear the message on Channel 34. So I just want to give my mom Florence Russo a shout out at her 99th birthday, and my sister Anne Marie from California, who leaves tomorrow morning at 6:00. I wanted my sister to know we welcomed her here for a week, we enjoyed having her, and she said she brought some greetings from Governor Jerry Brown. That brings me to Joyce Goldman's connection with the family, because Joyce went back quite a few years with me to that first election with Peter Shapiro and swearing in and that whole ceremony on November 13th, 1978, when they did form the new government in the county prior to being sworn in in January, which was what we had since then, but they started November 13th. And my mom was remembering that, Joyce, and she's remembering you, and she remembers that you did a poem for her on her 90th, I think, you did a nice poem to Flo Russo, it all rhymed, because you're a great poet. So I want to thank you again for always being good to my mom and my family, and my sister, who's also out there with Brown, who you know, also says hello to you. But to my sister and to my mom, God bless you, two great women in my life. And of course, my wife Christine has been helping with this whole 99th birthday. I hope my mom makes it to 100, I hope we all make it to 100. And I want to give a shout out again to all those in Montclair who are at, at that age, if you've made the 100 mark, you're reaching that 150 that we're celebrating. And 150 celebration is what I want to say, so impressed me with Mr. Gill at House Gill at Glenfield, that was the greatest little program, if anyone was there, and most of us were there, it's a program having the first council meeting from 187, 1868. How we still have some of the same issues, we argue about schools and funding and how we're going to deal with the prices of things and the costs and the taxes, and those students really brought out in the minutes of the 19, of the 1870s, 1868, first meeting of the council, some of the same issues this council continues to grapple with. So God bless you all and thank you. And by the way, my sister's going to take the Cheaper by the Dozen book back, because my mom reminded me that she had, she was a sister to, one sister and eight, eight brothers, which was 10 in her family. My mother's family was 10 growing up in, thank you, Joyce.
Mr. Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
It's with sadness and Thanksgiving that I would like to note the passing of Mr. Arthur Harrison, the father of Dr. Felice A. Harrison Crawford, who grew up in Montclair, has been here and very much invested in the community, and as an assistant superintendent, and in various capacities, serving us well in the Montclair Board of Education. Her dad passed on Saturday, and because I'm sure a lot of you may be very interested, I'd like to share the information. His home-going services are tomorrow evening, Wednesday, April 18th, at the Ebenezer Baptist Church, 153 Williams Street in Orange. The wake begins at 2:00, and that's between 2:00 and 3:00 p.m. And the services are 3:00 to 4:00 p.m. There'll be a repast immediately following. I'd like to just send my thoughts and prayers and my love to the family, let them know that I'm uplifting them, and I certainly plan on joining in the celebration of his life on tomorrow. On another note I'd like to mention, I know there are a lot of activities planned for this weekend, Earth Day. On this Saturday, there will be a South End Business District Earth Day celebration. We're going to combine a neighborhood cleanup with music and activities and just a joyous coming together of community and in fellowship. And that's this Saturday at the South End Business District, and that's between 1:00 and 5:00 p.m. And everyone is invited to join us and join the celebration of the earth and celebration of life. Also on Sunday, the 22nd, another Earth Day celebration, and that is for the Pine Street Neighborhood Earth Day celebration, along with Crane Park. There'll be a gathering, and I believe that starts at 11:00 a.m. on Pine Street at 73 Pine Street, that's Mary Z's lovely art gallery. So at 11:00 p.m., we're asking everyone to join us there on Sunday. We'll do a neighborhood cleanup there, the Pine Street. Our Lady of Mount Carmel is actually going to send some of their parishioners to join in the cleanup, and that's going to be also a celebration. There'll be music, they will be face painting, other activities. We're going to begin on Pine Street. We're also going to include planting. We're going to go to the Crane Park area, we'll do some planting and cleaning in that area, and finish up on Glen Ridge Avenue towards, just beyond the train, train tracks, there's an area there that is very much in need. So we'll be doing planting, and again, we're trying to encourage everybody to come out. Hopefully, it'll be a great turnout, and I'm looking forward to both of those events. So please join us if you can.
If I may, I'd just like to note the passing of Barbara Bush. It's just a moment of silence.
Let's do it, then we'll do a fan.
Okay. Other things, as long as I have the microphone, it was a wonderful thing at the library, and wonderful this evening with the film festival. Both things are major assets in town. You love the library, love the film festival, I'm looking forward to what's coming down the road.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to reiterate what some of my colleagues have already said, I thought the, the kids at Glenfield did a fabulous job on Sunday with the reenactment of the, of the first town council meeting here in Montclair. I think they did a better job than we could appear most of the times, but that's just me. Also want to thank the Ashenfelter Firm for the film festival, that event that we went to before we came here, we had to leave early, but several of my colleagues were there, and it was another great event. Happy to report the sixth annual First Day Ward Beautification Day will be this Saturday, April 21st, from 10:00 a.m. till noon, or 1:00, depending on where we're at. We're going to be at Mountainside Park, Yanacaw Brook Park, Upper Montclair Business Area, the Upper Montclair Train Station, Carlisle Woods, Bonzel Preserve. This has been a phenomenal event. We've had hundreds come out for this every year since I've had the privilege of representing the first ward. And we will go ahead and do what we've done many years, we'll spread mulch, we've got some flowers we're going to plant, we've got benches we're going to paint and fix, and it's just a really great event for the community, that we get the students coming from Montclair State, who help us immensely, the students from the public schools here in Montclair, who need their service hours, all are welcome. And it's a really great event, and it gets, it gets the first ward spiffed up for the film festival and the Iris Festival and all the other good things that happen here in the Springs. So look forward to seeing many of you there. And in celebration of Earth Day, we've done this now, as I said, for six years. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel as well? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to remind everyone that on Saturday, April 28th, the Montclair Pre-K will have its 30th anniversary gala. So I'm sure I'll see many of my colleagues there, and hopefully, many of you out in the public will be able to attend as well. Certainly a wonderful public-private partnership that we have here, something to be celebrated and really getting kids the opportunity for early education, which we know has lifelong benefits. So really excited about that. And just quickly for my colleagues, the bill that did pass, is it automatically, to Councilman Russo's point, does automatically register you to vote when you go and get your license? So it's an automatic.
Oh, okay. Good information.
But yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Well, I'm sorry, Mrs. Guinevere.
Montclair's young people are the gift that keeps on giving. The last public meeting, I congratulated Maisha Hines Allen on leading her Louisville Cardinals to the ladies' Final Four. I'd like to congratulate Maisha again. Last weekend, she was the 19th draft pick in the WNBA draft, and she will be playing professionally for the Washington Mystics.
Wow.
It's a very athletic family. She had, her younger brother is playing football at Kentucky, and he's projected to be a high draft pick in the 19 draft. And her two uncles, whom the mayor knows well, Keith and Greg, both played basketball collegiately, Greg being in the Hampton University Hall of Fame, and was drafted by the Warriors, I believe, and played a number of years in, in Europe. So I just want to congratulate the, the Hines, Hines Allen family, and I know they're all proud of their little girl.
Thank you. Before we adjourn, I'd have a moment of silence for Mrs. Bush. Thank you. Motion for adjournment?
Thank you.
All favor? All right, thank you, good evening.
Good evening. Who?[1746.13]